Recording in progress.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the November 4th regular meeting of the San Benito County Board of Supervisors. We'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Zanger is not able to be here, but we have a lot of veterans in the audience here today. So on the great suggestion from Supervisor Satello, if the veterans would like to stand and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd be honored.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the acknowledged certificate of posting. First, we have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That takes us to board announcements and committee updates. Who would like to get started? Supervisor Curl?
Sure. First of all, I want to thank all of our veterans for being here today. I know we have on the agenda the green light topic, so I'm really excited about that. My house is already green, just so you know. My son got the light bulbs in last night. We had the Vets Park Memorial Commission meeting yesterday, and I just really liked the board to understand there is a lot of frustration, unfortunately, due to safety concerns with the parking lot and lighting. It was a wonderful meeting to be able to meet all of the users of the park and the number of users. I had no idea that we're talking about thousands of youth that are using that park on a regular basis. And we've asked, we're getting total numbers, so we'll be able to report back to the board, the total usage. The challenge that I'm struggling with right now is the safety concerns that were brought up. I know that Steve Loop, our Public Works Director, has stated that we'll be able to get, hopefully, the lighting done. The lighting was bid, but unfortunately, that does not cover the dirt area that is being used by, I believe, the tremors. And now that the time change has happened, it's really a safety concern. So I would like, when we have a moment to have an item brought back to update specifically on the park, I would love to have a conversation on that. And different creative ways with our new CAO of grants and potential ways in ensuring that our impact fees, which the chair has brought up so many times, that we have a long-term plan. I just am very concerned about the safety. Some of the things that were brought up yesterday were, it's not if, it's when we're going to have something bad happen out there. The other item is, today is Election Day. If you cannot tell, I am sporting my red, white, and blue because I am an election geek. If you haven't voted today, please just remember, every vote does make a difference. And no matter what the controversy or topic is on the ballot, it is the voices of the people that make all of the difference. I had a couple other things, but nothing that is super important. I do know I have concerns about the tax sharing agreement with Sunny Slope coming back. I'm hopeful that we can get that back sooner. I believe there's going to be a public comment on that, and if we can have a discussion about how soon we could bring that back. So thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes, sir. I do have a comment. Something disturbing yesterday happened in our community. This problem's been going on for quite a while. We know politics are politics. A lot of misinformation goes out to try to influence people one way or another. But yesterday, a group that's been spreading a lot of misinformation through our community for quite a while posted something, a picture, and it said, a picture of a man screaming out, "Voices are telling me I need to hurt a supervisor or his kids." Obviously, that was directed to some of us that are facing this group. This is not the first time it's happened to me. Early in the year, this same group of people gave out my physical address and encouraged people to drive by my house so that I know that I'm being watched. This is out of control. It should not be part of our community. And I'm hoping that it can be looked into because, obviously, my wife now has concerns. A few years back, I had to teach my kids how to take their safety measures to make sure they're protected, because they hear it too. And this group, the only way I can say is disgusting, just disgusting. And I think as a community, we need to stand up and put it into this type of behavior. They have since this morning changed it to leave out hurting the kids and then claiming that's not what was said in the first place. That's something I made up or one of us made up. That's the kind of thinking that this group is. I just want to encourage all of you, if you know somebody that believes in these things, please have a talk with them. I made it clear over and over. I put my phone around so many times. I'll do it right now. 831-905-3720. If you have a question about this county and what we're doing, whether you like what we're doing or not, if you have a question, call. None of us on this board are going to lie to you. We're going to give you our opinions, but we're going to give you actual facts. Please, let's put it in to this type of behavior that just leads to violence, and we don't need it in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Satello?
Just really quickly, yeah, the Vets Park Commission, we do have some issues that I think we do need an agenda item. So thank you Supervisor Curl for that. Just really quickly, I attended the festivities in San Juan Batista this past weekend. It was such a beautiful celebration of culture and community. And so it was just, it was great. CAO was there. Our deputies were there. It just was such a wonderful thing. And so I'm hopeful that that will become an annual thing. But thank you to everybody involved that put that together. I know there was a lot of hard work with Dan DeVries, the city of San Juan Batista, El Tiatro Campesino, and many others. And so I just thank them for creating such a special thing. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, and so this is the time where we talk about what we've been doing in the last week. And I also want to point out that yesterday was quite an alarming day. You know, when you run for these seats, you know, you know you're going to get criticized. You know, when you take certain stances, there's going to be people on the other side that disagree. And unfortunately, in this country and now our community, we've gotten to a point where people are okay with promoting violence and making light of violence. And if we haven't learned enough already that this can ultimately lead to violence, then something's wrong. Then something's definitely wrong. And so I also had to calm my wife down yesterday when this social media post was put out by a group that claims what they're doing is satire. And they use the designation of satire, just so you all know, because there's nothing funny about anything they put out. You know, as Dave Letterman would say, "I know funny. That's not funny." And they're not funny. But they call it satire so that they don't get sued, so you all know. And what they're doing is really trying to put information out that they want you to believe. And in this case, they put out a cartoon that encouraged violence and harm against supervisors and their families, and specifically based on the "he" portion of the comment, the male supervisors, as one of our public commentators likes to call us, in particular. And, you know, I'm of the belief what happened yesterday was criminal. And I'm calling for a full investigation of what occurred, who was involved, and I'd like to get down to the bottom of this. And I'm not going to allow for anybody to threaten my family, my wife, and my children. And I'm certainly not just going to sit back and allow that. So something needs to be done. There needs to be an example set that we, as a community, are not going to allow this disgusting behavior and these people who are deplorable, who will do anything, anything to try to get their way politically. I'm sad, but I'm also, I'm faithful that we will get to the bottom of this and justice will be served. And I also want to point out, the same group of people have gone to my home, also alarmed my wife quite a bit when they put out a cartoon with imagery of our home with the recent, what they do is they use AI basically to create these cartoons. And they put out an image of my home with the recent decorations and everything that were on our home. So they came out to my home as well and very much alarmed my wife and made false claims, of course, in that post as well, that I live in farmworker housing, that I make $530,000 a year. Nonsense. So, bottom line, I'm sad for what happened yesterday, but I'm hopeful that this is going to come to an end. And I think this is the breaking point where this sort of behavior is going to have to stop. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Supervisor, if I may?
Yes.
You are absolutely correct. Political speech is one thing, but when public officials and their families are threatened with harm, that is not protected. And unfortunately, these types of actions do occur. And I had to deal with them as the Riverside City Attorney and the Riverside County Council. And these are disturbing. These are criminal actions. So these are under investigation. We will seek to identify who these individuals are, who are the responsible parties. And if necessary, we will pursue a civil restraining order against these individuals in order to protect public officials and their families. Public employees, public officials are protected under the law from threats of harm to them and their families. Yes, we are public servants, and we do expect that there will be criticisms. And criticisms are protected. We have to have a thick skin in this business. We understand that. But when threats of harm are made, then the line has been crossed. And so it's my responsibility, as your county council, to take all necessary action to protect all public employees, not just the elected officials, from harm, from threats of harm to them and their families. So this is a very serious matter. I want to make sure that everyone understands that. And my hope and expectation, just like the boards, is that this will not continue, and there will be no actual harm that will befall any public employee, any public official, or their families. And I think everyone needs to understand it. It is a very serious matter, and we will do everything necessary to protect our county employees and officials. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That would take us to the following item, which is public comments. This is the opportunity to address the board on items not appearing on the agenda. Do we have public comment not on the agenda?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And we'll start in chambers with Drew Lander.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. My name is Drew Lander, General Manager with Sunny Slope Water. I'm speaking on behalf of the Water Consolidation and Drought Resiliency Project, which is currently underway in the South County. This project is being funded by two substantial grants and local match funds, with the Department of Water Resources having granted $2.5 million allocated to Best Road Mutual Water Company, and $13.5 million being allocated to Trace Penaus Water District, and additionally with the county CSA serving the Stonegate neighborhood. This water consolidation project is for the benefit of these existing residents of the county only and unifies all residents during times of drought. And those droughts will come. The water services planned for and designed will include the existing service areas of these water districts, as the grant funding is provided only to solve the water quality and supply issues of current demands in the area. This is not a Sunny Slope project. Sunny Slope has been asked by the county to help solve the poor water conditions of these small water districts. And the Sunny Slope role is to be the project administrator and ultimately the surviving water district to supply. The next step in this process is to present an application for annexation of these smaller water districts into the Sunny Slope Service Area through LAFCO. Sunny Slope concedes that no property tax shall be requested from the county when these applications come before LAFCO for consideration. I ask that the board bring the zero tax transfer agreement back for consideration and approval as soon as possible. This step is critical for a couple of reasons. The project is strictly to solve water insecurities for the constituents of the county of San Benito, who you represent. This project will improve water resiliency and preserve water property values, ultimately helping to provide more revenue for the county. The project is underway, and several million dollars of Department of Water Resources grant funds have been expended in the design and development of this project at the request of the county, who currently holds the $13.5 million grant. Failure to complete this project in a timely manner will result in DWR funds being revoked and will either cost these constituents of the county considerably more money, or it will result in the project being ultimately rejected and not completed. I am committing to you, the LAFCO applications that will be presented will specifically indicate water services only and will exclude any sewer services as Sunny Slope does not have the capacity or the intent to provide sewer in South County. I include by stressing the urgency of adopting the zero tax transfer agreement so the proper application can come before LAFCO. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And since we had a question, timing, just for clarification purposes, is that allowed? What is the plan for bringing this item back?
Good morning. My recommendation is to maybe schedule a special meeting either tomorrow afternoon or Thursday morning to come back and present the item. I have worked with Steve to identify the existing water lines that are going to be connected and to restrict this consolidation to the existing water lines. And so Steve is working on the request.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in chambers, Rob Bernowski.
Good morning, Chairman Cosmiki and fellow supervisors. I didn't realize that all of you would be talking about this topic, but the darkest moment I've ever witnessed in this county and the governance thereof is that very Facebook posting where it was indicated that violence should befall, should be brought on to the children of supervisors or a particular one. And I am, I'm actually requesting via this public comment that if the sheriff or the chief of police is not investigating, we need to bring the full weight of law enforcement to find out who did it, out the people who are behind that particular statement. Free speech is free speech, but they cross the line that cannot be walked back. That bell cannot be rung. And I would hope that you would also contact every elected official in the county and their families and get them to get the appropriate body to investigate it. Like your county council, I looked it up. Yes, it is very criminal. Can you imagine if, you know, I was still an elected official and that came out against me or my wife, who is a public official right now? I would be going to the state's attorney general and asking them to investigate. It was a threat. It was real. And again, for those of you who don't know, there are people under the influence of drugs or otherwise mental illness, and they see those things and they interpret them as instructions to go do something. That's why you guys just can't rely on, well, maybe they'll take care of it or not. I'm asking you for the benefit of you and every other public official out there. No, this is, they have to be audited who they are, and justice has to be brought upon them. It's probably, again, it was the darkest moment when I saw that, and it has to stop. I wish every single one of you well with your families. And I know what you do is sometimes controversial. And I know that I've disagreed with all of you, and I can even remember the exact moments of policy differences or stuff. But I would never think about disparaging you or threatening your health or that of your families in any way. And I wish the rest of the community would rise up and make that sentiment. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Next in chambers, Ann Hall.
Good morning. My name is Ann Hall. I'm a civil engineer here locally, and part of what I do is tentative maps and final maps at our office, San Benito Engineering. I'm here in regard to these minor subdivisions. One of the requirements that has been standard on every single subdivision, large or small, for the past three or four years is that anyone involved in a subdivision must join the countywide CFD, Community Facilities District. This is a requirement that the county puts on the project. And again, no matter how big, no matter how small, this is so the county can put additional taxes on those properties. And in the case of minor subdivisions, that's mostly to support police and fire. So once subdivided, those properties pay additional taxes into the county to support those services. I have had, I currently have two projects where the CFD paperwork, the application for annexation, was completed, was approved, was signed, and was on the agenda in August. And it was, they were pulled. One was in August, one was in September. They were pulled off the agenda and no reasons given. They have not been back on the agenda. These are something that have been so non-controversial is that they are typically on the consent agenda and get approved many, many times over the past few years. So now I have two clients who have completed all the conditions on their project, spent quite a bit of money completing those conditions, and they cannot record their map because the board is not processing the CFD annexation. I've given, talked to the RMA director. I've emailed the clerk of the board. I'm trying, I have no idea why these are not being processed. But in this case, I have two minor subs. These are three lot subdivisions, again, non-controversial. Everything's ready to go. And as of today, if they're not on today's agenda, but because of the requirement that these be processed twice at the board 30 days apart, it is now impossible for them to be processed before the end of the year, given your schedule. If they're not recorded before the end of the year, that has implications for my clients. They're going to be paying a whole nother year's worth of taxes before they can record their map. So I'm bringing this to your intention, in case you are unaware of it, but I would like, at a minimum, an explanation why these are not being processed when literally the only beneficiary is the county. If the county no longer wants people to join the CFD, that's certainly your option, then the condition should be removed. But my client is only trying to comply with the condition the county has placed on their map. Thank you.
Ms. Bandry, were you speaking now under general or for the vets one? Okay, you're next then. Okay, you're next then.
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm speaking on behalf of our Veterans Park Commission. I'm the chairman. I've been the chairman for about five-plus years. We're, we haven't really spoken on behalf of our park, but we have concerns about safety, and we have been working diligently for, over the past two years, and we thought we were making progress. We had plans for lighting, we had plans for resurfacing, we had plans for restriping, for safety, we had all of these plans, and I understand budget, we completely understand that, but lighting, on the minimum, should have been not off the table. It is a safety issue, because we do have, with just the way the part of the restriping, we have people driving in and out of the park dangerously, and I'm not sure if anybody's been out there, but this is the most used park in San Benito County. This park, for our residents, we have so many children that benefit from this park. We have, if it's not sport, if it's not sports, it's 4-H, or it's scouts, or it's somebody using this park. We have had veterans use this park for special needs. We've had so many things come out of this park. The high school uses this park for our carnival. This park is the most used park in San Benito County, and we cannot let this park fall to the wayside. I've always said, we have had this park put on the back burner, and I love the idea of the River Parkway, but if we can't maintain what we have, I really don't think we should be moving forward on anything else. And unfortunately, we have so many families that are so upset right now, and we're coming to you to just, if you can, if you can help us with looking out of the box, and if you can help us in any way, if you can just help us think outside of the box, and assist us with just taking a moment and looking at a way for us to, to just make sure that our kids are safe. And that is, I think that is, anybody that's going to come and talk to you, that is what everybody's concern is, is the safety. When you look at our, the entry, we have one way in, and only one way in and out. We were suggesting a second entrance in for emergency services. There's just, our plans were amazing, and unfortunately, we...
You can, go ahead.
So unfortunately, our plans were put on hold. So that park, when we have an emergency, we had one way in, and we weren't able to, emergency services won't be able to get an ambulance in and ambulance out. So our plans were amazing, we had, we just need assistance to get this completed. I know we have a lot of families here that were hoping to have this completed by the end of last year, and then it got moved back, and now unfortunately, it's, we're looking for other, for funds, so we're just looking for assistance. When you go back to the plans, if you can, if you can just look someplace else for some funds, we would appreciate it, because I know we're going to have some angry parents here very shortly, so, but that's all. I appreciate your time, and thank you for the opportunity to talk in front of you. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Gina Anadi.
Good morning, my name's Gina Anadi. I'm with Hollister Heat. I'm the president, and this will be my second year. Three, I just want, I'm not as soft-spoken or patient right now as Maria. Four years ago, this was approved, the striping, paving, and lighting at Vets Park. It was, we're going to get it done in the next year. When's your slow time? You know, so the Little League, Bay Ruth, City Rec, everybody put the information in, okay, between the time of November, we all wind down, we don't start up really again until February. Okay, well, that's when we'll get mobilized and get this going. Came and went, the year ended. I came back to the Vets Commission and to the Board and said, where did the funding go? Oh, it went into the general fund. I said, we have safety issues. It's not just the lighting, so it's, there's no striping out there. And in case you don't know, maybe people aren't aware of how many people use the park. We had a meeting last night with the Vets Commission, Bay Ruth, about 200 players, Little League, 595. Hollister Heat has three seasons, spring, summer, and fall. In that time, we have almost 800 girls enrolled. Tremors, I want to say it was around 1,100, is that right? I wasn't so sure. So if any of you guys come out there on any given day during the week, there are games, City Rec has their adult leagues and their junior giants. So any given day, you can come, drive by. If you don't have the time to come in, take a drive by, you'll see the parking lot full, and this is, fall's our slow season. On Saturdays, that parking lot is full, from one corner, from Bay Ruth, all the way to the Bertha Briggs Building. What I found out last night is that, which was really startling, is that the Tremors have no lights in that parking lot next to the skate park. For girls, to have to walk to the cars in dark, it's 5:30, it's dark now, huge safety issue. Where our parks are, to me, that this hasn't been done, and it's a known thing, and that we can keep, I'm off on more parks, I'm 100%, I'll do whatever I can to get kids playing off their phones onto fields. But to have a park that is loved by so many, like, we love that park, and it's just not Little League, Bay Ruth, Heat, City, our community, I don't know if you have kids that ever played, that's a heartbeat. That's what kids do in San Benito County, they play sports. Where else? They have, I'm not going to stop talking, if that's okay.
You're fine.
We have Target, the movies, Dutch Bros, you know, and then Trouble, and then Sports. You know, our softball team a couple of years ago was number one in the state, started at those Heat fields, Volunteers. That's what we do here, that's what we are proud of. There's farming and 4-H, 100%, they're just wound up. Number one thing the kids have to do are sports. City Rec increased our field rental, went from $42 to $60 an hour. Heat has 42 teams. Our two fields, we need more room. So does Little League, I'm here on, speaking on all of us. The Hollister School District, without notice, last October, raised rates from $15 an hour for a field usage to $45 an hour. That started in January, without notice. We are all, like, trying to make up, because when you're looking, that's triple. When you're looking at $15 an hour, $45 a day, and now you're $150 a day per park, so, again, going back to my safety issue, but I'm bringing that to...
And you could please wrap up if possible.
100%. So when I'm wrapping up, this is what I'm going to ask you, as you tell me to wrap up. The funds that were approved that went back into the general fund, then were approved again, went back into the general fund again. I'm talking striping, because there's none out there. I'm talking lighting, and I'm talking resurfacing for safety, because a child, grandparent, mother, father can be hurt. So where's my call? After I dial 911 for the ambulance to come in, because the plans are done, they're complete, there's two exits, everything's complete, so there's no going back and, oh, we have to do the plans. No, Steve was here last night, they've been completed for years. So somehow, the money's not there, and I'm sorry, I'm not tolerant to, oh, well, we had to put it somewhere else, or, oh, budget cuts, or, no. The safety of our children is number one. So who do I call after I dial 911 that someone's child was hit by a car? Anybody have an answer? I think we need to work on that. This is number one, because our kids are number one. Enough. Thank you.
And I have no further public comments.
Great, thank you very much. So that would take us to our consent agenda. These items are considered as a whole, without discussion unless particular items are removed. Do supervisors, would supervisors like to remove specific items from consent?
Do we have anything for recognitions that are here in the audience? I don't think so. Okay, then I'm good.
Supervisor Tottelo, anything? I don't as well. We have public comment for consent?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom, please press star nine or the raise and icon. And I have no public comment on consent.
Entertain a motion to approve consent?
I move to approve consent.
First, you have a second?
I'll second.
First and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That would take us to our regular agenda, the first item, 2.1, received presentation from the Veteran Services Officer regarding current annual veteran county data and adopt resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans, approved certificates of recognition for American Legion Post 69 and American, or VFW Post 9242, for the work they do in the community, and direct building as in ground maintenance to light county buildings in green. Green filters for existing lights for Operation Green. Thank you very much for being here.
Stand right next to me. Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, and CAO Warren, and the veterans in the community. Thank you for coming out this morning, as we move to celebrate veterans. So we do have a presentation for you. First, I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Adam Rahibi. I'm a six-year Air Force Vet, served in Afghanistan, been working in Veteran Services ever since I got out of the military, thankfully, I get to do something I love every single day. And then Sherri Stevenson, I don't think she needs any introduction for this crowd, but she is the mother of veterans, and serves this community, the veteran community, as well. Do you want to introduce yourself or say anything else? Right on. And I want to just, you know, I want, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to come out and share what we do for this community, and thank you very much. So I can just roll right into it. And unfortunately, our BSO, our Director, Jack, could not be here right now, he had to be at the other Board of Supervisors meeting. So what does your County Veteran Service Office do? Primarily, we support, assist, educate, and advocate for veterans and military members' benefits. Our core services are benefits counseling, claim development, submission. We're the county's only accredited connection to the Department of Veterans Affairs. If a veteran walks in, we will complete all the paperwork for them, we will develop their case, gather all relevant records, submit to the VA, and advocate and appeal if necessary. General statistics, approximate statistics due to the government shutdown, San Benito County has 2,539 veterans, active guard and reserve service members, retirees, survivors, independents. In fiscal year 20, excuse me, in fiscal year 2024, 2025, this office, Sherri primarily, served 306 unique veterans, filed 1,116 claim actions, and was awarded 368 VA disability compensation claims, totaling over $3.5 million brought into this community, that's spent in this community. And so that is both in retroactive payments and annualized monthly recurring benefits. And this is only for San Benito County veterans and their families. Some more of our core functions and services that we provide primarily, we connect veterans to VA healthcare. One of the ways we do that is through collaboration with the Department of Social Services or Human Services. We receive referrals for Medi-Cal, and what we do is we try to take those Medi-Cal referrals, contact them, follow up, and bring them onto the VA federal system. And again, disability compensation claims, transitional assistance programs, so those veterans and reserve National Guard service members that are getting out of the military, we provide them benefits counseling and presentations to help ease their transition out of the service into civilian life. Vocational and employment programs, so we provide the application process and the general counseling to get them to transition from active military member to going to school, applying their certifications to a trade or whatever, you know, relevant area that they can get a job in, in our local communities. And civil service preferences, vehicle property tax relief, DMV and veteran license plates, Parks Passes, educational resources, college tuition fee waivers, another big one that we do here. So this office, specifically, we waive college tuition for service-connected dependents. So any veteran that's receiving VA disability, we can waive their college tuition to California publicly-funded schools or universities. And we also assist with a VA home loan program and Cal-Vet home loan program, insurance programs, and we also take care of the burial benefits for our surviving dependents. Here's a one, cleaner, one-pager of the services that we do, again, you know, the numbers that we went over, but something I really want to point out that wasn't said in the last slide, is comparative to last year, we had $3.4 million in new and increased benefits that were coming to this county, just in the fiscal year 2024 and 2025. That is both tracked in our office and in the state, so this is coming directly from the California Department of Veterans Affairs, in collaboration with the Federal Department of Veterans Affairs, on new and increased benefits that are coming to this, to this community, just specific to San Benito County. And then again, we spoke about the college tuition fee waiver, but Sherri waived $306,000, or, yeah, $306,000 of college tuition. That's a cost savings for the veterans' families in this community, and that's, you know, directly to the California publicly-funded schools or university. And then she did all of this with a, we do put out a customer satisfaction survey. I always say Sherri is our most loved, this community loves Sherri, the work that she does. We consistently get, I say 95%, that's what's tracked. That 5% negative comment is not about this office, it's about they're frustrated with the VA, and they just use our survey as an outlet. But Sherri is by far the most beloved Veteran Service representative that we have in our office. She's also the most seasoned, and I'll say it, she trained me when I first came on. We are very lucky to have her in this community, is lucky to have her, I will say, in both Monterey and San Benito County. And then, so for our current operations, San Benito County is one full-time employee, so with Sherri Stevenson being the full-time vet rep assigned to this area. Jack Murphy, our BSO, does represent the county to the State Association and the California Department of Veterans Affairs, and then I am the management analyst that runs the data and the background as well for San Benito County for reporting to the state. And then we also do have a part-time office assistant in Pam, she's amazing as well, and she mans the front office when Sherri's there, and also when Sherri's not there. We do have a suite in the Veterans Memorial Building, so an amazing location, central hub for all veteran services in this county. And our services are provided in person, remotely via Zoom, email and regular mail, and also over the phone. We're trying to, I mean, ever since the pandemic, we've looked to expand services as much as we can for those that cannot make it into the office, so we're just trying to be more available. And then at this time, we're Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 12:00, and 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. by appointment and walk-in basis. We also provide community events and outreach, and I want to stress for our operations, in terms of both addressing the government shutdown for the federal VA, and, you know, things that might have been said in the past, there is no change to operations, there's no future change, there's nothing that's going to change in our provided services to this county. As of now, we are not affected by the government shutdown. The VA is a little bit slower to churn certain benefits out right now, but at this time, there's no change to our daily operations to this county and Monterey County, if anyone lives there as well. Some opportunities that we can see in the future... Some opportunities that we can see in the future, some things that I personally want to work on for this county. We want to work on outreach and collaboration with other San Benito County departments. So most recently, this year, we did collaborate with the Human Services Department to provide training to their eligibility workers and staff on our operations, how we can be linked into operations. If they get a veteran referral for benefits, we may be able to assist them. We may be able to connect them to healthcare, get them disability compensation, or help them with job training or education. So we did present directly to their staff two different classes, and I would like to keep that going and maybe, you know, go out to other departments. In Monterey County, I have been able to crack the nut on getting to the Sheriff's Office, where a lot of veterans, you know, go post-service. I'd like to do the same thing for San Benito County and also spread to different departments so that we can get that county collaboration going. Most notably, identification so that they know our office is here and that we can assist, you know, not only just the veterans out in the community, but also the employees that work for San Benito County as well. We want to increase outreach to underserved county areas, and something that's ongoing is high school partnership for the California Tuition Fee Waiver. We want to get into the high school as the seniors are going to college to make them aware that they have a benefit, that the parents have a benefit that may potentially waive college tuition. At this time...
You can continue on, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
At this time, you know, college tuition is expensive and everything's expensive. We want to see if we can provide any type of cost savings for the veterans and their families. And most notably, something else that we've done in the community is that we provided an event, we collaborated an event with Assembly Speaker, Assembly Member Rivas's office to provide free glasses and eye checkups for veterans, specifically for veterans. And we did it both in Monterey, it was a tri-county effort, and we did a section for Santa Clara and San Benito combined to where veterans were able to go get free glasses in Gilroy. So we'd like to look for more opportunities to serve the community here and, and then some local, I'm sure you guys are all aware, but some local Veterans Day events. We do have the Veterans Day Ceremony and Parade, 11:11 at 11:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial Building. And then, as you guys are aware, Operation Green Light, November 4th through the 11th, green light bulbs are available at our office and then I'm sure other locations. I'm sure Maria has like a pallet of light bulbs. But, and, you know, thank you for your support. Thank you for the opportunity to address you guys, the veterans, and again, thank you all for your service and thank you for your service to the community, subject to your questions or concerns.
We'll bring it back to the board, your four items in one. Do you have questions or comments on the presentation? Would like to start, Supervisor Velazquez?
Yeah, I think you're right, the 95% is really 100%. I've worked with Sheri for so many years, known her for so many years, and absolutely the greatest person. Love our Sheri Stevenson here, so thank you so much for all you do for all these years.
Thank you. We are, I can't speak enough volumes about Sheri. I mean, she doesn't need me to do this here. Everyone here, I mean, they're greeting her before they even knew who I was in the lobby, and she, we really are lucky, the veterans are lucky, I want to stress that. Veterans are lucky because of people like Sheri. It's easy, I serve, I served. So it's easy for me to go back and help the community that I, that I served in, that gave me everything that I have. You know, Sheri took it upon herself, when her kids entered the military, I'm not sure if any of you know this, when her kids entered the military, she schooled herself up on veterans' benefits to take care of them, but also take care of the community. And she's continued that on, and we are better for it. She provides a lot of training for our staff, you know, the community, and we are very lucky to have her. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Curl?
I just want to thank you guys for all you do, Sheri. I mean, I hear nothing but phenomenal things about you. I am really excited about the opportunities that you listed. I think it is imperative that our youth understand some of the options. I was one of those youth that didn't know, and my dad didn't know, and so I missed out. I would have loved to have had that. So I really support the outreach that you're looking at with the high schools. I think that's phenomenal. Not only is it great because of opportunities for college, but it's also great for youth to understand what it means to serve in our community. And serving our country is a very, very important part of being an American, and I thank each and every one of you. My dad was a Marine, and God rest his soul, love him so much. When it comes to the Green Light program, house is already lit up, but where can I get one of those nice signs? Because I saw it on Facebook. Do I, okay, so do I just come over to the office? Okay, I will come over to the office and get that planted in my front yard. I love the idea of the signs this year. It is really helping promote and explain what the Green Light is about, so I'm very excited about that. And I got a new flag this year. I made it twice as big in my front yard. So just little things I'm trying to do to support our veterans and all of the service that you've given to our country, it's really remarkable. Thank you.
Supervisor Tellow?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm going to turn on that.
No, you're fine.
No, you were great. I just wasn't sure where exactly how we were going to handle it, because there's so many items to this agenda item. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for the update, and thank you for all of the time last week. I know I called both offices, and thank you for correcting kind of some of the misinformation that was out there. I think people were very alarmed and very scared and afraid that things were going to change, and so thank you for being so, I mean, I think they were pulling you guys out of meetings to have conversations with me, so thank you. It was very scary though, and it is a very scary thing, there's so many changes going on. And so I appreciate you kind of putting this community concerns as a priority and making sure that there is no changes that are going to be happening. And so I appreciate the presentation. Sheri, thank you so much for everything you do, being at the office, but I see you at so many community events and volunteering and helping, and so I think it's incredibly important that we have this connection that at least once a year, because we do contract with Monterey County for our Veterans Service Office, that we have this communication, this partnership, and making sure that we're always staying connected and communicating with each other. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you as well. And we had prior comments, when you try to just describe our community and the things we take pride in, you know, of course agriculture and sports, but one thing that I know for sure, you know, being here for a quarter century or so, is that this community takes pride in the veterans here, and I want to make sure that that continues to happen and that we continue to strengthen that, that level of pride that we have here. And so thank you for your service to this community, and our role as a county is just to, you know, make sure that we have an open line of communication, that we're providing those resources. I would strongly encourage you and the veterans groups, if there are lapses or other question marks, if you see any opportunities where the county can play a role, to certainly communicate those to us. Because I know that this board supports veteran services, the veterans groups, you know, you know, not only from a financial perspective, but just from a human perspective. And I appreciated hearing about partnerships with HHS and just whatever we can do to continue strengthening partnerships, whether it's through HHS or other means, please do let us know. And otherwise, just want to thank Supervisor Setello for, again, bringing forward the Operation Green Light item, so that would sort of transition us into Operation Green Light, but thank you very much again. Keep the communication lines open. Do you have anything else you wanted to add before we move on?
No, again, just grateful for the opportunity to be able to, you know, just address veterans on the eve of Veterans Day. It's the best part of my job.
Thank you so much. So that would take us to the second item, which is Operation Green Light, and I will just hand that over to Supervisor Setello or whomever, if you have a few comments you'd like to make about the Operation Green Light, or is there somebody that's providing the resolution? What's that? Did Seena go out?
Okay, is, do we have, let me see. I'm looking for our, no, not that one. Do we have the resolution for it?
Yeah.
The wording that I'm supposed to be? Sorry, I'm just going to talk off the top of my head for the moment. So I think Operation Green Light, I learned about it a couple of years ago, and that first year, it was like, I don't know, the day before, it was going to be the start, and I called up the CAO at the time, and it was like, oh my gosh, there's this amazing program, is there anything we can do? I'm all about shining a light on our veterans. And so that year, the staff worked really hard, they were gracious, they lit up the front of our administration building. And then last year, it was kind of, hey, how can we make this bigger and better? And so I thank this board for being so supportive, and they've always been, yeah, whatever it takes, let's do it. And so last year, we did something a little more formal, and we were working with the VFW, and I know they were selling a ton of light bulbs. I think it ended up being a wonderful fundraiser for them. But this is really an opportunity for the community to show their support to our veterans, which is so critically important. And so I thank all of you for everything that you do. I hope we get our community so green that you can see it if you're in an airplane above. That's my goal, is that someday we will get there. I think every year, this is growing, and it's becoming a thing that, last year, I know there was a lot of people that were like, what's up with the green lights? Like, what's going on? And so I think there's a lot of educating that we can do and the importance of supporting our veterans. And so this year, I think, great, it was kind of a last-minute thought last year. I know Elaine Estrada, she gifted me a yard sign last year about, I support our veterans, and this year, they really embraced that. And I know the VFW has the yard signs for people. I will be putting my yard sign out today. As soon as this meeting's over, I will go home and change my light bulbs. But this is something that is deeply important to me. I am so proud to support this. My husband is a veteran. This is just the most amazing group of people that I get to work with. Doing this job has really opened up my horizons, and I've gotten to meet the most amazing people. And both American Legion and VFW, you guys bring so much to my life, and so thank you. Not only did you serve this country, but you come back and serve this community that is just admirable and inspirational. I don't know of people that are so selfless, and you all are incredibly selfless, and I hope that everybody in our community gets the opportunity to work with you all and to learn about what you do, because you truly make our community a better place. And so if we could all just shine a green light to show our appreciation and support for everything that you're going through, it truly is an honor for me to light my home up green, and I hope that everybody in our community and all of our public buildings would eventually, hopefully, be lit up green. And so thank you, I'm so excited and supportive of this Operation Green Light. So thank you.
Thank you very much for that, and since this does require a vote, I'll take it to public comment. If there is public comment specific to the Operation Green Light resolution?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board. Comments, Supervisor Curl?
I'm good. I would make a motion to approve the resolution, and I just, I, I will tell you, the green lights, reminding yourself where you hide them, is going to be the challenge, because I hid them somewhere in my house, and it took me a couple of days to find them, but I did find them, so I'm going to have them in safe spots where I'll remember where I put them.
Supervisor Velazquez?
I was going to say, that's what Amazon's for, or Ace has them too. You get them real quick.
All right, yeah, thank you very much again. Thank you Supervisor Setello, and beyond that, though, just request that the county does what we can to promote this, and if we can get the resolution perhaps on social media, perhaps put out a press release that we're taking part in this and encouraging people to take part and to recognize veterans, and so they understand when they see those green lights, we as a county are honoring our veterans. That would be my request. Otherwise, we have a motion on the table, we have a second.
So I will second it, but can I add something? I don't want to add anything to the motion, I just want to say, so yes, there's Amazon and there's Ace. However, if you purchase it from our veterans group, it actually go, and it benefits their programs, and I hope that when we get to our next item, I would like to go into some specific things about what supporting these groups means, because what they're doing for our community is just absolutely incredible. So please purchase from our veterans instead of going out, and particularly, I mean, Ace is a local business, so I guess I could be okay with that, but instead of Amazon, I really, if we could purchase them from our veteran groups, I think it really goes back to supporting even more in our community. So I seconded it, right? So, okay, sorry, those are my comments.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second, roll call vote.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curl? Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
4-0 vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. So that would take us to the certificates of recognition for VFW Post 9242 and American Legion Post 69. And first off, before we vote, do we have any public comments on those certificates of recognition?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the certificates of recognition.
I move to approve.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, roll call, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curl?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
4-0 vote, motion passes.
And if members of the group would like to come up, we can present you with the certificates of recognition, if you'd like to take perhaps a photo with the board.
Do you want to do like one group at a time?
Yeah, we can do that, so the first...
And then we could do like collectively, everybody together?
Sure thing. So the VFW Post 9242, if there's somebody with your organization. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Appreciate it so much again. You know, I know, I think we do this every year, but we can't do this enough. And I know we all come out on Veterans Day when we can, and we do our best to honor the veterans, but one of the things that I can tell you that I am constantly challenged with is, you know, how to most appropriately thank veterans, being somebody that did not serve. I'm always, I'm always just curious, you know, what is the best way to thank a veteran? And so as we move on, and you know, we communicate with one another, I want to thank you, obviously, but I also, whatever you can do to give me, enlighten me, as somebody who is, did not serve, what is the best way to show our appreciation for the veterans community as a leader in this community? I certainly would appreciate that, just a genuine way to say thank you. And this is our small part in saying thank you to your organization, which, and these organizations, I think everybody that's been around knows, they are a bedrock of this community, and they, along with Sheri's office, keep the wheels in motion. And we have to have strong organizations to support our veterans, and so just with the almost gratitude, I just want to say thank you. So if anybody would like to comment, here's your certificate, and maybe we can take a picture after with the entire board. Thank you, sir.
Yes, on behalf, my name is Bernie Ramirez, I am the commander for the VFW Post 9242, and I'm honored, thank you so much for the Board of Supervisors for recognizing us. We do everything we can in our community, and if anybody wants lawn signs and bulbs, I have them at my house, 1560 Memorial Drive, and my phone number, 831-902-7811. If you'd like to call me and come by and pick them up, I have a bunch of them in my garage. Thank you very much again, so thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Thank you, everybody, appreciate it. And then we'll call you back up and maybe the photo. CAO? We have, oh, do you want to do each group separately? How would the board like to do?
Yeah, we will. I think we're just, we're going to move on to, but can I say something really quickly about VFW 9242? I don't know how many people realize, and I'm going to miss a lot of things here, but I just want to say, some of the things that this group does, Wreaths Across America, the Special Heroes Carnival for special needs children...
the Special Heroes Carnival for, um, special needs children. They do an annual golf tournament. They, um, they do the, um, the burial, the honor guard at, um, funerals and not just our community, um, they go all over, all over. And so we are so lucky to have them. Let's see, what else do they do? Operation Green Light, they are doing, um, veterans that have needs. They do it, they do packages to our current service members. So they're supporting current service members, they're supporting, um, veterans in need. What am I forgetting, Bernie? The banner program downtown that you see flying. They do the Memorial Day ceremony and remembrance as well as the Veterans Day. So this group is incredibly important to our community. I know I'm forgetting a lot. I know you guys. Oh, and scholarships, they're even doing scholarships. Anything else? They're just amazing and remarkable. And I really wanna highlight some of the things that they do because I think that, um, it, it's just, this is a, a real moment for you guys to shine and for us to show our appreciation. And I, I really want this community to know. I did write an article, it's in Benito link under, I think, commentary or something like that, talking about Operation Green Light and talking about some, why it's important for us to support it and some of the work that our veterans are doing here locally. So, um, just thank you again. We cannot thank you enough for everything that you've done, um, for our country and our community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. And then if, um, members of American Legion post sixty nine would like to come up? Appreciate it. See you again. Yeah, so thank you once again. I would just echo what I said, obviously with the prior group, these two groups, uh, work hand in hand. Maybe perhaps there isn't a stronger partnership, uh, in a somewhat divided community than we see with the American Legion post sixty nine, V F W post. And, um, and again, you know, we have Veterans Day, we have the parade. You know, there's Memorial Day, obviously, where we're honoring people who have passed. But whatever we can do to, to, um, show gratitude throughout the year, it shouldn't just be one or two days a year. We should be doing that. So again, it's just a small token of appreciation, um, for a group that has put their lives on the line, many of them, and, um, many others who we've lost. And, um, you know, whatever we can do to recognize your group and others that continue to support our veterans, we are here to do that. So, thank you very much. Appreciate you. And, um, if you'd like to say a few words, anybody there? Go ahead.
I know that, uh, the American Legion post sixty nine is a lot older than I am. Thank God. On behalf of, uh, the American Legion, our whole group, we'd like to thank the board of supervisors. We'd like to thank our county, our nation, and let you know that we love you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Like the groups would like to come up, we'll.
Can I just say something about post sixty nine really quickly? So, again, American Legion and the work that they're doing, these are both veteran organizations, but I think they both kind of have their niche. And, um, Maria, you and your team are just absolutely incredible. It is such an honor to get to work with you. Again, you've got a group that is doing so much above and beyond just providing services and support for veterans. I mean, their most recent endeavor was a haunted house inside the Veterans Building, trying to do something for our children here and trying to bring, um, economic opportunities for our businesses in downtown Hollister. Thank you so much for always thinking about the community as a whole. I know you guys, you know, blanket drives. I mean, again, you've just, you've got these organizations that are just doing so much for our community and you deserve all of the recognition today. I appreciate the thank you to us, but we are just, it, it's a day about you guys. It's a, it's a week about our veterans. And I, I just think we cannot shine a light enough on you all. And so, thank you for everything that the American Legion is doing, um, in supporting this community. Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it. Yeah. And if you all would like to come up, we'll take a separate couple of photos and.
You don't wanna be in it? The base.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody, for that. And then the fourth item on this, um, item would be to direct buildings and ground main and stop the light county buildings in green, utilizing the most appropriate methods, including but not limited to projections, floodlights or green filters for existing lights. I assume we don't have additional public comment, but I'll ask just because I asked on the others, is there any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you so much. And we'll bring it back to the board. Any further comments? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion to direct as recommended. I'll entertain that motion. Is there a first? There's a first. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All is in favor, roll call please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello? Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velasquez?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, everybody. Is there a will to take a few minutes or do we wanna move on to the second regular item? All right. Right. Oh, C A O? Yep. Few minutes, we'll take a few minute break. Thank you so much.
Recording stopped.
Probably could have been sued.
Isn't that that Benito beat, beat or whatever?
Hold on, same group. Same group. Remember Vanessa gets back. I saw a guy wearing it.
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome back, everybody. Before we go on to two point two, I was informed we need to, um, County Council has an announcement about an emergency item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, after the posting of the agenda, it came to our attention that there was a need to bring a matter before you. And that involves a short amendment to a contract to extend a term for private security for our Behavioral Health Department. We needed to make sure that we have security guard services. It appears that there was or would be a lapse if we don't take action today. So we are asking that this board unanimously approve adding this item to the agenda. And again, that the board then approve the amendment for a short extension just to ensure that we have security guard services until the Behavioral Health Board is able to complete their review of the responses to the request for proposals and to come forward before the board to enter into a long-term contract. Thank you.
Very much an entertaining motion to add that to the agenda.
I move to approve this item two point three.
The first, is there a second? Second, second. All is in favor, roll call please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velasquez?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. So we will move on then to item two, that would be item two point three. So we'll move on to two point two, which is, uh, adopt a resolution ratifying the existence of a local emergency due to the disruption of funding of the CalFresh program, federally known as the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program or SNAP. It's a federally funded program providing critical food assistance to 7,742 recipients and 3794 households in San Benito County.
Good morning, board members. After a meeting with the food bank, uh, last week, uh, we realized that, uh, they have made two requests to the state for additional food to be supplied to those residents that are being impacted, directly impacted. residents that are being impacted, directly impacted by the lack of, the lack of the CalFresh program or the SNAP program. And so, in an effort to make, to be proactive and protect those families and to receive additional assistance from the state, we issue a declaration on emergency based on the CalFresh affecting more than 7,000 families in the county of San Benito. And per the code in the county, there are seven days after the CIO makes the declaration of emergency, the proclamation of the emergency, which was sent already to the state of California, California Office of Governor Emergency Services. And there is a whole process, but we wanted to be as proactive as I could, as we could. And today is, we request a letter of ratification of the proclamation of the emergency. And I have Ms. Chris Mangano to explain how this works before you take a vote. And also, I had the Food Bank, who has been coordinating with us, and Ms. Tracey, Tracy from HSA. We all coordinating efforts to assist those families that are being impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
As CIO mentioned, we proclaimed on Friday, it was received by the state governor's office, and we need to ratify today, if that is your wishes. This lets the state basically know that we have a vested interest in our community, and that if any aid is offered at any time, that we are interested in receiving that. However, there's been no mention of reimbursement or aid offered at this time, but that puts us in line for it, if there is. Several other counties did proclaim on Friday within the state of California, so we are one of several.
Thank you very much. Anything further before we go to public comment? We have the Food Bank here, as well as mentioned, if you'd like to come up.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. I'm here about the state of emergency that the CIO just referred to. Just to highlight some of the facts that we're facing, there are more than 7,000 residents of San Benito who are affected by this, more than 3,000 of them are children. And I also want to highlight that even though there was an announcement from the federal government that partial funding would be released for the SNAP benefits for the month of November, that does not mean that that has addressed the crisis for our community. Those community members do not yet have their benefits, and if you check several news sources, CNN, Associated Press, it will be weeks or months potentially until those benefits are received. So the crisis that our residents were facing in terms of food insecurity has not gone away. I also want to highlight, although I am grateful for everything that the CIO has done working with us, that in many ways, our response is behind the curve in terms of our region. Santa Cruz County has released $500,000 to assist their food bank. Santa Clara County, not comparable in size, but they've released 4.5 million to assist their food bank. So now is not the time to wait and see in terms of what we can do for our community. We are... So I really do implore you to ratify the declaration of emergency that the CIO has put forth. There were $80 million in accelerated Cal food funds offered by the governor's office. 430,000 of those are destined for our food bank, and we have requested them, but they have not yet arrived. So in terms of what we need to do to make large food purchases or to expand our services to assist our community members who are affected by this crisis, we could make use of any flexibility or any funding that we were able to secure together, and we look forward to working with you on this issue. We have several members of our community who are here to show their support for the Food Bank right now, and for our community that are facing food insecurity during this crisis, and thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up to CIO. Did you have something further?
Yes, just to kind of like walk through to the process, how it works. If today the board decides to ratify this emergency proclamation, this will be sent to the state of California, and only after the state of California, the Office of Emergency Services accepts our declaration, our proclamation and ratification is when the clock starts from being able to recover any, any funds that we have used to serve this community related to the declaration of the emergency. I just wanted to be aware of it. We can potentially use reserves to, to assist the Food Bank with the purchases of additional food, but it will take time for us to recover those funds. I just want you to make, make it aware. Number one, it has to be accepted by the state, the proclamation, and number two, it will take time for us to recover those funds. So just want to give you a heads up on how it works. We have also working with HSA to potentially identify some funding, but the funding is very limited, and so it will require to have, to use some of the reserves to be able to assist on a temporary basis.
Thank you. Is there a will to ask further questions before we do public comment, or would you go ahead?
Thank you. If we, can we get the director of the community food bank to come back up, please? Thank you. You mentioned both Santa Cruz and Santa Clara County, and I think, I think I heard this, but please correct me if I'm wrong. You said they've raised 500,000?
They, they have committed 500,000.
Okay, so they committed, they didn't raise, okay, because I was curious. I'm like, how did that work in the community?
From, from the counties.
Okay, so the county has committed funding to their food banks.
That's right.
And Santa Cruz was how much again?
500,000.
500, and Santa Clara was how much?
4.5 million.
4.5 million?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you so much.
And just to clarify, Napa County, they use part of the tobacco funding that they have. We don't have that funding available. So they committed some of the funds that they have available, like tobacco, what they collect from tobacco taxes, and we don't have that funding available, or as it will be our reserves.
What do you mean, we don't, like, we don't collect the tobacco funding here?
It's been used.
What was that?
It has been used in the past. That's my understanding.
Oh, it's already been used for something else?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
We don't have that luxury to have ever available, and so that's what I'm going back to. It has to be general reserves.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Kuro?
So just to be clear, it's general fund reserves? There's no other reserves from HHSA? No offense, I know.
Yes, there are some in HSA that we could potentially use in advance assistance, but it's not much. So I don't know if Ms. Tracy, you want to step in?
Yeah, Tracy, would you mind coming up and letting us know what you possibly have available?
Sure. Good morning. First, I just wanted to kind of give a little update that we received from the state as of late last night regarding the temporary restraining orders that were issued for the federal shutdown. So the USDA has opted to issue partial benefits for November. They're using certain tables rather than what we currently use for allotments, and the method requires a new infrastructure, which obviously will take some delays. It's at the court's decision now. If the court accepts the plan, it could take one to three weeks to get the benefits issued to the families in the community. We're working closely with our state partners to see how it's going to advance. Obviously, it's going to take collaboration with our computer system, which is called CALSAS, to figure out how they're going to do the benefit calculation and issue it to the, the families in the community. So we are on it daily, getting updates from the County Welfare Directors Association, as well as the California Department of Social Services. Just a little side note, you know, as Antonio mentioned, as well as the CIO, we've been in communication with the Food Bank regarding how we can assist them. I've also reached out to the community foundation to see if they have any funding that they can possibly assist with. As you all are aware, they assisted during the floods with some food distribution, and so we've reached out to them, and they're exploring what funding sources they may have available. I've reached out, reached out to First Five. They also have a food distribution in collaboration with the Food Pantry, and they are willing, sorry, the Food Bank, and they are willing to open up another distribution lane specifically for CalFresh beneficiaries with a little bit of cost for admin. We have reviewed our fund balance, and we do have some funding that we're looking to see if we can assist as well. CIO Coolio Warren met with the, the community food, food bank and talked a little bit more about what may, may be needed. So we need a little bit more time to review what's available to assist in the distribution of food for the families. And so we do have a little bit of fund balance that we could utilize.
What is a little bit?
Well, we feel comfortable around 50,000. When we met with the Food Bank prior to their meeting with CIO Coolio Warren, they gave us a rough number. I believe Antonio and his team stated that the last two months, the food that they purchased was roughly around $30,000. So we felt if we could advance about $50,000 to purchase the food items that they don't get by donation, that that could help offset the cost for the families. And we wanted to make it specific to the folks that are CalFresh recipients, which can be a little bit difficult to maintain and monitor. We would ask possibly for them to show their EBT card so that we can give them a special food distribution separate from the, the regular individuals that they serve daily at the Food Bank.
Can the Food Bank Director, can you come up just so we can have sort of a conversation when necessary?
Yeah, take a seat up front.
Yeah. Is that pretty much the extent of, so you're saying $50,000 would be an amount that would offset the current challenge for how long? Is this, we're talking like a month?
We were just looking at November initially, when we met with Antonio and his team. And I know he's had further conversations with CIO Coolio Warren, and she might want to debrief on that a little bit more. We're happy to have further conversations. At this point, that was the number that we had at our agency.
Well, I think, you know, trying to wrap our heads around this, you know, for me personally, we've got to do whatever we can to, to meet this challenge as a county, whether whoever's fault this is, politically, federal, state, now it's on us. So, but I'm curious as far as the Food Bank's perspective, how this, hearing what, what Tracy said, how this might work, what your needs are realistically, and she talked about the EBT card as well as a potential requirement with the county funds. Do you have thoughts just to piggyback on what Tracy just mentioned?
I think that obviously the easiest version of this would involve us not like verifying EBT cards, but we are prepared to offer a dedicated service window or expand services to make sure that we do what we can to make sure that these funds are going to the people who are losing those benefits specifically. We haven't talked about First Five specifically, but we have talked about the YMCA of San Benito offering early morning and late evening pickup windows for EBT recipients who can't make it to our usual pickup times. And additionally, some of the services that we would potentially expand beyond large food purchases if we received emergency funding are, are delivery services for homebound or older individuals who are also affected by the shutdown. In terms of an estimate of what the cost would be, this is, our conversations with Tracy were earlier, but we did provide an estimate to CIO Warren of what like the monthly cost would be to provide the level of service, service that we currently provide, which gets about 20 pounds of food to an individual for a month for all of the individuals affected by the shutdown, which was closer to $390,000, including administrative costs. And to be clear, this would be at the level that we currently provide service at the Food Bank, and it is important to note, Feeding America has noted that for every one meal provided by food banks, nine meals are provided by SNAP benefits. So we are offering a service that can somewhat mitigate the harm, but doesn't really replace a federal service.
But that would include feeding everyone, not just the EBT?
No, that was, that would be only to address individuals who are affected by the shutdown. The 396,000, that's what we're talking about.
For a month.
For, for a month, yeah. Because the thing is that while we only spend 30,000 every month or two on food purchases, that's because the vast majority of our food is, is donated. And that's not a dial that we can just crank up because we're having an emergency. We are asking our agricultural donors to donate more and our supermarket donors to donate more if they can.
Not that we can guarantee anything, but what's your ask of us?
If it would be, it would be $390,000 or so. Like, that, that's just the amount we have set for what the service would cost. So as close as we can get to that.
It's basically to provide food for the 7,700 individuals that are not going to receiving the EBT card allocation, it'll be $396,000. That's for the full amount of November. So, because Ms. Tracy is already working with the group, that it might take three weeks, more or less, to get some response. Then you're looking, if you divide that amount into four months, you're looking about $100,000 per week. That's what they, that's what they...
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, when Tracy, when you came up, where I was going with this, and, and you've kind of backdoored into it, is you're giving a number, the one to three weeks, let's say it's three weeks in delay. Is this, is that the number, the 395,000? And i- if it isn't the number, what is that number? Can we, and this may be a council question, can we front that money, and then when the funding comes in, get reimbursed for fronting that money? I don't know if that's legal or not. Okay, well, I'm trying, I'm working here.
I think it's, I think it's two separate paths. So eventually, when the state gets the EBT to roll to their cards, the CalFresh benefits to roll to their card, they will get the benefit that's calculated based off of this table that they've determined. I haven't seen the table, so I can't, I can't tell you what the amount is. They will get that put on their card. Those will not be reimbursed to us. If we were to front that, that wouldn't be reimbursed.
There wouldn't be a reimbursement.
It would just roll to their card, and they would have the benefits. The number that Antonio is suggesting, I think, is a number that he's calculated based off of some calculations that food banks use for food distribution. We were trying to initially in our, in our preliminary meeting that we had prior to his meeting with the CIO, we were trying to determine how much food do you purchase on a monthly basis for the population that you serve right now, right? And we don't have the data of how many of them are CalFresh recipients and how many are not. They serve a lot of undocumented individuals and a lot of different populations there. So we were trying to say, okay, if you currently purchase, let's just say $20,000 worth of food that supplements the food that's donated, if we can advance money to buy more food, maybe that would help offset the cost, right? And so, you know, his number's a lot different than when it was then, but I'm sure he's done some mathing and talked with other folks that he feels that that is what is needed. And, and I'm not doubting you in any way what, what may be needed. I just want to make sure that we are evaluating it as a whole and seeing what we can do as a county, as an agency to help collaborate.
So the tables right now, sorry, CIO, the tables that we have now, we don't have a, a method of being able to like have a calculation of where we are now with what these benefits are for these almost 8,000 people or 7,000 people. We have to go off of the new tables, and we don't know what those tables are, so we really don't know what they're losing. Am I understanding that correctly?
So there's a lot of things that factor into how much benefit distribution is allocated to each family. We have to count income, family size, all sorts of different factors, rent, income and kind. There's a lot of things that determine the monthly distribution amount per family. Right now, it looks like the, the state and the federal government are trying to just give a blanket table. I haven't seen them yet. It may be in my email this morning, I'm not sure, but this was as of last night.
Okay.
And I think they're probably trying to just do a flat rate to make it easier for, so we don't have to do a lot of work calculating the benefit based off of income and other factors. Then they will have to work with the CALSAS system, which is the system that issues the benefits to the card. So the state, CDSS, will have to work with CALSAS to say, okay, how are we going to get this in the system so that it rolls the benefit to the card? Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay.
And, and do you normally typically, just to educate myself, do you normally do these calculations every month for these individuals?
Yes.
So this is a monthly calculation that you're always doing, and we can't do a guesstimate on where we were because it changes every month? Am I kind of following?
Well, it's one point, about $1.3 million a month go out in CalFresh benefits for the county.
1.3.
That's paid by the federal government to just this county. So that is how much is distributed to the families in San Benito County. I think it was roughly 1.3 million. So, and I'm going to just correct myself. I don't know if they have to redetermine monthly. I don't, I don't know for sure. That's a little bit in the weeds for me, sorry. I don't know for sure. I think it is monthly. When I used to be an eligibility specialist, it was monthly, but that was a long time ago. So I'm not sure, but their, their calculations are, and they do get them issued every month, the benefit, yes. So it may change and fluctuate a little bit.
So what I would like to caution is that following, and following what the comments from Ms. Tracy, is that they're going to give you a different table than what you usually have. So potentially, you can have an individual that originally was receiving $250, and that individual may receive 125. We don't know that. The second portion is it might take three weeks to get to the point in which they're going to receive the funds.
Correct.
Or the assistance directly. That doesn't mean that they're going to go retroactive.
Correct.
Meaning is from that moment and on. Therefore, we have three weeks off when the families are not receiving meals, food, or benefits. And so that's what the request from us is to address that issue. We didn't know about this issue last night when we issued the declaration. To my knowledge, the Food Bank requested additional food, and it wasn't distributed. So that's what we reacted to, to potentially... So that's what we reacted to potentially provide services to those members.
Supervisor Velasquez? Yeah. It's hard to believe this day and age, we're talking about not being able to provide food to our community. It's just, this is what we're dealing with out there, folks, and it's, it's shameful. We've got to understand the steps. Today, we're talking about approving the resolution for the emergency request because that's a first step. We've learned in the past, from what I've heard, is that if you move before that request is granted, you're out. And unfortunately, this is part of the game that's being played here. Making bad decisions at a different level of government and saying, you communities down there, you guys figure it out. We're, we're up here fighting each other, we don't really care. Well, we do care because we're where it's at. And quite frankly, I'd rather be here than some of those places. I think I would, well, I don't want to go there. See, I want to thank you. You seem to have moved really quickly on this, understanding the importance of making the declaration. I guess the question is, how much time before we find out?
We can make that call today to find out what the status is. Ms. Trace will be able to contact the state with the ratification in place and being able to get a response. Usually, we get ourselves in the list and then we wait for their ratification. And then maybe at that point, we can get an update what we are so far.
So if we can get that, to that point, and then understand the numbers better, and I know it's hard from all the numbers you're, you're sharing today, so that we're ready to move financially with what we have to do to do it.
So we are having potentially a special meeting on Thursday. So this is, this is my recommendation. If you approve today the ratification, we make contacts with the state immediately and we can come back on Thursday or with a number more or less more realistic and so that you can provide us with guidance.
Yeah, unfortunately, I have a doctor's appointment on Thursday, but. So that would be my recommendation. So let's get this thing, if we agree here, to get this approved, really get those numbers as best as we can. I know it's not going to be perfect, but make sure our community understands, hey, we're working hard here to make sure that you don't starve. I mean, that's just.
But are you done, sir?
Yeah, I just, well, I'm just shaking my head, but yes, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I know, I mean, a lot has been said about this and I, I agree with you. It's, we're talking about feeding children. And children that, you know, are in the position they're in potentially, a lot of families that are in the position they're in, it's not their choice to be in this position. And, and so I think it sounds like the board's on the same page that we're going to find a solution here, it's just a matter of how to get there. My concern is that it's already November 4th. We would be having a meeting on November 6th, we're six days into the month. What kind of challenges does that present for the Food Bank? And are we talking about putting a dollar amount on the table today just to get us through? Or are we waiting two more days and what are the repercussions of that?
So one thing that we can do, if Tracy feels comfortable with, she already identified $50,000, we can allocate those funds in advance right now with your approval and then come back on Thursday with different options as well.
Yeah. I would support that as a temporary stopgap personally. But I know we have Supervisor Tello and then we'll go to public comment and then we'll bring it back.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So if we advance the 50,000, is that enough for the Food Bank right now? I mean, I agree, we're a week in at this point. And I'm almost wondering, you know, based on the numbers that we were given, I mean, we've got a $1.3 million gap, right? So like $50,000 to make up for food is a drop in the bucket. I realize we can't do the 1.3 million, but the number that was given earlier was $390,000 for one month. Could we potentially look at doing 100,000 per? You know, it's 100,000 a week essentially is what we're looking at. And so whether we have a special meeting to do more numbers or whatever, but I think we really need to be looking at 100,000 a month because, yes, their food costs maybe, I'm sorry?
A week.
I'm sorry, a week, yes, thank you for that correction. Because they were saying their food costs 20,000 or, but that is based on all of the donations. So now they're going to have, you know, a little bit more money to buy, but they need actually a lot because there's going to be a huge increase in people being served. And so I would, first of all, I am so appreciative that we are receiving this and that this was a priority. We were getting phone calls on Friday, hey, can we do that? You know, are you guys supportive of doing an emergency? And I just, I really, really appreciate the proactiveness of our staff in working on this and, and doing kind of the hard work and putting this together, seeing what other communities were doing. I feel like we're really standing up for our community in this. And so thank you to all of you involved that really helped and did that. But I would like to see us be a little bit proactive and not kick the can down the road, even if it's a few days. I think a few days is precious timing for everybody because not only do we have to approve this, get it up to the auditor, get the payment out, they've got to order the food, we're behind the ball, right? And so I guess I would like to see us take a little bit of action today. It may not be, maybe it's $100,000 for this one week. We've got the 50,000 coming from HHSA. If we can commit 50,000 from our reserves, at least we bought ourselves one week. And then we can take a little bit more action potentially on Thursday on coming up with maybe a little bit, still short-term solution, but maybe taking, extending a few more weeks out. But I think we need to do something today. I mean, these are real people's lives. The burden is falling on the community Food Bank right now. And, and I just, you know, I, I, I don't want people to go hungry. And if there's something that we can do, I think we should take that action today, even if it is small. So thank you.
And I appreciate that. I think we're all on the same page, it's just a matter of finding what that right number is to get us there to Thursday, basically. And then I assume beyond that, because we're not going to get an answer from the feds right away either, or the state right away either. Tracy, do you have $100,000 available that we can use?
Yes, we can give $100,000. I think we need to do some more, have some more conversations a little bit further on details on how. But I think we will, we have sufficient funding that we can advance $100,000.
I think as a show of, just piggybacking, I appreciate Supervisor Tello's suggestion that we don't want to fall short, we don't want to take the chance of falling short. This is, this is again, a stopgap. We need more clarity Thursday and potentially beyond. I would support the suggestion, Supervisor Tello. I appreciate you being willing to get creative. And Supervisor Kuro has something else.
I totally agree and I appreciate both my colleagues' comments. When it comes to the EBT cards and being able to verify, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to be a stickler on that one. I really feel that verification needs to be done because there's such a need always in our community. This is a floodgate and once it starts opening, it's out of our control. And we are, we, we can't solve the world problems, but we can at least try and help soften this problem. So I would want it to be verified, the EBT cards. I don't know what that looks like. I'm sorry to put that on both of you, all of you. And also really leaning on our nonprofits. I, I plan to attend the philanthropy night on Thursday. I, I hope that we can, you know, really get the community to understand, this is a team effort, this is not just falling on the county. We need as much support as we can. And if we can keep it where we're thinking about the individuals, regardless of status in this county. I am, I, humanity is the most important reality in our lives. And if we don't look at each individual as a human regardless of why or how they're here, that could be devastating for our community. So I, I want to make sure that we're not putting any strings on anything. We're just serving the people that have, that are right before the holidays being unserved by our communities or by our other government entities. So I totally agree with my colleagues and I, I think the $100,000 for, to get to Thursday and then kind of what's the game plan moving forward? And hopefully we can come up with something and a great way to have our nonprofits really step up and help with us.
And I want to take the opportunity also to mention that I know that bringing in a lot of food for a lot of people is not easy. So I'm volunteering with the Food Bank to go and pack boxes of food. So I'm inviting everyone who is willing to donate two, three hours of their time because putting together those boxes is not an easy task. I have been in situations, similar situations in Imperial County and I know how hard they work. So I'm inviting everybody willing to send a message to the staff in the county to volunteer after working hours to see the Food Bank. We can help assist the Food Bank to put together the boxes that they're going to have to distribute.
I do just want to highlight one other thing really quickly. Hardin's in San Juan Batista has offered to serve one free meal a day to every child on CalFresh benefits, just showing their proof of EBT card. Running Rooster, another local restaurant in the community, has reached out to us to inquire how they can assist and they're evaluating what they can offer as well. So that is another place where we can tap in to see if other restaurants, grocery stores, other partners can reach out and offer these things. But I do want to acknowledge Hardin's, that's an amazing message and a token to any child that is on EBT benefits. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that as well as the public.
Thank you, Supervisor Tello.
Thank you, that's incredible. And I think when people are stepping up like that, that's where I feel like this responsibility of our board is, you know, hard to put out a plea to the community without us stepping up. And I think we are stepping up. And so I am so grateful to this board and I, I feel better about, you know, going to the community and, hey, can you help us in this, right? We're in this with you. And so thank you to Hardinus, thank you to Running Rooster. I'm curious, and I'm happy to volunteer as well. So if you're at the Food Bank, please let us know how we can sign up and how we go about that. I would be happy to volunteer and do whatever I can right now to do my part. I'm curious though, Supervisor Kuro, and please, I am coming from, I want to understand what this means. And maybe Tracy or Food Bank, you can help in answering this question. But what does showing your EBT card prove when you're going through the Food Bank line or any other line? What is that proving? You're in that line because you need help, you need food, you need assistance. So I don't understand why showing a proof of something, what that's going to achieve. Oh, okay, well now you don't have the proper card, so go to this line. You, you still need the help. So I'm hoping maybe some of you guys can help me understand the need for showing an EBT card in the most respectful way. I just really want to understand the need for it and why we would want to do that.
I, you want to go and then you go and I'll go too.
The reason, okay, for me, it's, we're trying to fill a gap for a group that are being removed funds. And when you don't have an EBT card to show that we're, we're funding that group, you are now funding others. And, and, and there may be a need there, that's the need of the Food Bank. I'm trying to ensure that the dollars that we're putting forward are filling the gap that we have. And I'm nervous that we will not have enough food for the EBT individuals. If there's extra food, oh, be my guest. If there's extra food and nobody, I just want to make sure that the EBT are being filled and not, it's not being, I, there are always individuals that need assistance. But there are also, I'm sorry, I'm just going to say it, there are takers. And I worked in Santa Clara County and I saw it. We need to make sure that we're getting the food to the people that need it the most. And yes, we do have a problem with feeding our entire community. That problem isn't going to go away because of this. And maybe this will bring attention to that problem and we can address it. But to me, I feel like we need to make sure that we're getting the money to the people that are actually being withheld any benefits. That's where I'm at.
I can comment briefly on that. I understand what you're saying. But full transparency, once you have an EBT card, you have an EBT card. Whether there's benefits on it or not, we don't take them away. So if I had one and my benefits were discontinued, unless you run their EBT card through a system, it will not tell you if they're an active EBT card holder.
And we don't have the ability to do that?
Ooh.
Sorry. I, I, I would, that was me with an assumption, I apologize.
So there is a mechanism that we use at the farmer's market to give EBT tokens out to folks to purchase food. It would take a lot of staff time and, and I believe it may be an option. I'm not positive, we do use it at the, at the farmer's market to verify benefits. But I think that if we are doing this in good faith and trying to serve the population, if we set up a separate distribution line, as Antonio suggested, and in good faith, ask the participants as they drive through, are you an active CalFresh? Can we see your EBT card? And trust that they're saying that they are and give them the food. We're doing it in good faith. And I think that that verification, in my opinion, and all due respect, is enough.
Okay, I, I didn't know that there wasn't a way to actually validate that. So I appreciate that and I do appreciate the, the concern. I don't want to withhold food from anyone. If I had my wish, the whole world would be fed. It's just sad that we are in the United States of America and we can't even feed all of our residents. So this, this hopefully will highlight that and we can use that to help bring attention to the needs of food insecurity, which has been something I've been following since I got on the board and it's, it's very sad out there. So I appreciate that and I will go with whatever the recommendations from administration and the staff is to ensure that we are at least trying to get it to the people that are most hurt in this crisis. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add that, you know, these dollars are extraordinarily precious and that's, you know, where I think we have to, you know, we don't know how long this crisis is going to go on. And so we have to treat these dollars with the most preciousness that we possibly can. And I think it does make sense to have a good faith. I don't think having the, the tokens and going through all that because that's going to create a whole nother layer of complications. But I think just having a good faith request to show it. If you get a few people that are taking advantage of it, then so be it. But that don't need it. But I think just considering the preciousness of the situation of the crisis, it only makes sense to at least request to show that you are an EBT recipient. And there are, I think we all know that, there are going to be people. I, you know, I started with Mary Vasquez Edge, the San Juan Batista food drive during the pandemic. And yes, the vast majority of people clearly needed the help, but there are people that go through those lines that don't, aren't at that same level. So we really need to, in my mind, because we don't know how long this is going on, we really need to focus on taking care of the most disadvantaged residents in the community first with this. Yes.
Can we hear from the Food Bank? I'd like to know the burden that we're putting on them. And I think we can, while this is a generous donation and it is precious and all of that, we also are putting a huge burden on the Food Bank, right? Like, we're providing $100,000 to them, but we're asking them to make up the difference of this, you know? Let's just hypothetically say we give 400,000, 100,000 a week, but the gap is this $1.3 million. So there's a $900,000 difference that essentially we're asking the Food Bank to cover. And we're kind of saying, well, we want to make sure that we, we take care of our CalFresh people. And, and, and yes, Food Bank, you have your people that you normally take care of, but we're also putting a huge burden on them to make sure they make the, up the difference of whatever else doesn't get covered under our 100,000. So I just, I, I understand where you guys are going and I appreciate it. I just don't know that, and I'm going to do whatever, you know, to support and all of that. But I do think that we are putting somewhat of a burden on the Food Bank that I don't think is necessarily fair. So I would like to hear about the burden, please.
Yeah, the burden is some, is tremendous as you've identified. And I think that. Yeah, the burden is tremendous, as you've identified. And I think that when it comes to something like how we will verify whether or not people are CalFresh recipients, we will do what we can. I would strongly advise we look at what our sister food banks in Santa Clara County and Santa Cruz are doing because they are also receiving county funds. And because looking at the scale of our operation, which to be clear, we have many volunteers who help us, but we have 12 staff members right now. It is obviously very difficult to think about what the logistics would be of new separate distributions, especially with like rigorous verification. We will find a way to make sure that we do this in as much good faith as we can. But more concerningly, if you've been to our food bank before during our distributions, there are lines around the building and also around the block for our drive-through distribution. If we are sending 8,000 people to a single distribution time or a single distribution location, that is a logistical nightmare. So we, and I cannot, we will, again, we will do our best. We're in the same situation you are right now where this is a problem we didn't expect to have to accommodate. But I would strongly recommend that before like the county dictate what the restrictions need to be for what EBT or CalFresh verification looks like, we look at what our food banks in Santa Cruz and Santa Clara are doing with their county. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. Antonio, I had you first, but you don't need to make any further.
Okay.
I'm not sure how this is said. Is it Glenis?
Good morning. My name is Glenis Crabbe. And I've been a volunteer for the Community Food Bank of San Benito County for four years now. Started out when COVID happened. And at that time, the marketplace at the facility was closed down and only drive-through was open. And so that's when I started there. So the food bank doesn't just serve Hollister, but it serves surrounding towns and communities like Trace Pinos, San Juan Batista, Aromas, and also our senior communities, which I think seniors get forgotten, to tell you the truth, because some, a lot of them can't get out. And a lot of them rely on other people to bring them to the food bank in order to get food. Anyway, so I just wanted to put a face, I wanted to put a face to the people that come to the food bank. On Wednesdays, we have a day where the floor of the marketplace is cleared out and provisions are put in, both canned goods and groceries, vegetables, and bags are built. And these are put onto racks. They're three tiers high. And I used to work the food, the bag bill, but until about a year ago, but then health issue told me that I couldn't do it anymore. It was just too physically. It was too much for me. But anyway, the back bill fills three-tiered layer racks, each have 48 bags on a rack. And these are distributed throughout the community, either in trucks to the outlying communities, or also we distribute these bags through the drive-through at the site on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. Last year, we were doing about 12 to 15 racks on the Wednesday, which on, two weeks ago, we were up to 19 racks. That's 800 bags. By Saturday noon, they've all gone. The need is out there. I now work the drive-through check-in and the food bank facility where we give out to families that arrive in their cars. And that line is always long. Usually the second two weeks of the month are the busiest. The other day, we broke records. We had 154 families in the drive-through alone between 9:00 and 11:45. That's, as I calculated, that was one family per minute and 10 seconds. The marketplace that day had over 500 families come through. My customers, I call them customers, but you know, a lot of them have become friends. Seniors, many with health issues and on social security. There are families with kids in cars. Childcare is not an option for them to come and get food. Regular folks just try to make it through the month. Rent is due first of the month. They need gas money, PG&E, and it's hard to stretch the dollar for food. I've also noticed recently that people haven't just, who haven't visited for a while are now coming through the food bank. They have a need.
Ma'am, we do three minutes for public comments. So if you could try to--
I'm going to wind it up right now.
Thank you.
We should be there to help on another. COVID was a crisis, but we're in another one. And also with regard to the volunteers, I think like, I think you could say that 90% of the staff of food bank are volunteers. And so you're really putting a huge burden on volunteers. And I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Rigoberto. I believe he's the gentleman that's outside with the children.
If you want to go to the next one--
We can go with Elia next and then, unless he's coming in. Oh, you want to let him go, Elia, so that he can get his kids? Rigoberto, go ahead and come in. Because he's got the children.
Hi. Good morning. Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here. Thank you, everybody else for being here, members of the audience. I'm here with some of the most valued members of the community. And I am lucky enough to be able to provide for my kids to always have enough to eat. But the thing is, did you hear how they get loud sometimes? And it's hard to do work and it's hard to crunch numbers, whatever you guys are doing in here? Yeah, well, thousands of parents in San Benito are going to lose the ability to crunch numbers and to do business at their houses because their kids are going to be loud because they're hungry. This is a very serious situation. This is, every dollar you invest through SNAP benefits into a kid between one and five years old gives back $62.50, right? You really need to invest in our communities. You need to invest in our communities. You need to really take this seriously. This is not, this is not games. This is, this is a moment of crisis. And I'm very glad that you guys are taking action. I'm very glad that you guys are meeting the moment. And it's, you have to step up. And us as a community, we have to step up. And I'm sorry to say this, but sometimes really hold you guys accountable. And we will hold you guys accountable. And we will do our best to organize, to coordinate with all of our neighbors, to speak with our neighbors, to, I don't know. We can gather votes everywhere. I know a lot of people, we have young kids in our midst. We have people who are tired of the old politics of this faction is doing this, this faction is doing that. Oh, la enchilada. Oh, my goodness. You know what? I'm not happy with people using my Latinidad or the Latinidad of this community to further their political points. It's embarrassing. Embarrassing. Why don't you do, why don't you send mailers that have to do with what you did for the community? Really? I don't know what you guys do for the community because my mailers don't tell me anything. My mailers just say, hey, this former mayor is terrible. She's the former mayor.
You please stick to the topic of--
I am. This is the topic. You guys need to be held accountable. And being held accountable has to do everything to do with the food bank, right? Because we will really, we will hold you guys accountable. We need to put all of our eyes on what you guys are doing, and they are on what you guys are doing. And I'm sorry to be so off-topic, but this is not off-topic. This is definitely the topic, okay? The people of Hollister are taking this very seriously. Kids need you guys to do this.
Thank you. Next in chambers will be Elia.
Oh, you heard that from his heart. That was great. Let's just be clear. Supervisor Cosmicke, you did not start the San Juan Batista food whatever there. It was two young men from the New Fellowship here on Fourth Street, Bill Lee and Martha's Kitchen, that started it. That's what started San Juan. And it really irks me that you sit up there and you try to take credit. Thank you to Ms. Bautron for saying that she's going to be able to shift some funds around to help with this crisis. Supervisor Setella earlier, let's be proactive instead of reactive. This was brought to you and you should have been paying attention to the news, what was going on. And it should have been one of you Board of Supervisors that should have put this on the agenda in the event that something happened because you knew it was going to happen. Again, you are now being actually reactive because it was the food bank that came to you and said, hey, we got a problem here. You have senior citizens that are not going to be able to drive to go pick up their food. You need to think of the logistics on what that is going to look like and what is that going to cost. You need to come back, I guess, in a couple of days and you're going to think about where's the money going to come from. Well, I have a great idea. You need to pull some money from the roads to help the most needy people in this county. We had folks that lost their homes and you bought trailers, RVs, so they can stay there. And they still hadn't found a place to live because there is, there are no vacancies, there are very little vacancies in the Hollister. And what did you do? You chose to evict them. That's not showing compassion to your community. Those are the folks that were in those RVs at the migrant camp that are also needing to go to the food bank and get food, get groceries. If you've never been there, the line is literally, the cars are around down Santa Ana Road, not Santa Ana Road, McCloskey, I think, McCloskey Road. So now you're going to have to think of logistics with regarding, do I contact the Sheriff's Department or do I contact the Hollister Police Department? They're going to need to help us also because there's going to be a majority of cars out there. I am here to tell you to put your priorities in order and look at what we have in San Benito County and take money from the roads and put it where it really belongs. And like the gentleman said up there earlier, it is the children. I believe that it costs a taxpayer $36 a year just to go to SNAP on our tax dollars. That's not a lot of money. I will continue. You gave them, no, sir, you said presidents. You need to consider what it is that we can do to help. $36 out of our tax dollars is not a lot of money when you gather it. Also, you should also choose to reduce your pay, Supervisor Cosmicke and Velazquez. You laid off people--
Crap up.
--county employees that are now having to get funds from the county food bank. They've been going there before and now they have to give in more.
County Council. Thank you.
I have, I have one on Zoom. You've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Matthew Hollister, resident. Just want to say, there's a huge delay here on the supervisors for action. Just as the last speaker said, this has been an issue in the media since the beginning of October. We should have definitely had some plans and contingencies in place. You guys should have been working with your other counties in surrounding areas to see what the plans that they had. We all saw that many of these counties gave budget to fund SNAP and to fund the local, like Second Harvest Food Bank and other food services. So I think you guys need to just look at what the entire budget is for the month and approve that on a contingency basis. Also, I think a lot of you are out of touch. What you don't realize is the people that go to the food banks are also on SNAP. SNAP is not enough to cover your groceries, to feed your families. So to supplement that, you also go to food banks. Speaking from somebody who is both. So I think you guys need to remember that. People that go to these places are on both services. They're not just one or the other. I think that's ridiculous and so out of touch that you guys think that. I think also too, you have to realize, most of the city and county workers are also on these services. They do not make enough to cover their bills plus groceries. So I think you guys need to consider that, thinking that all the people that do the work for you, most of them that work in your staffs are also getting these services. And I think it's a little disheartening that our county is slow to the, to the action here. Setting up also verification is going to deter a lot of people. When nobody ever asked to show your refrigerator during COVID. So I think asking for any type of verification is just ridiculous and going to deny a lot of people the right to food that they need. I think our supervisors here need to take some pay cuts, need to give some money, need to do something for the community other than sit here and do a round robin and speak very windily when you guys are trying to get to public comment, just to basically say the same things over and over again. Get some action, please. Remember that all of the county people here, employees, non-employees, a lot of them get these services and you guys are doing a disservice by not funding and not thinking ahead. So please make sure that you guys are thinking more proactive. Right now, like the last speaker is very reactive, still even in this point. I think that everyone here needs to really think about that the community is at risk and is going to be continued at risk the further that this goes on. And even after the shutdown is over, there are repercussions from that that we are going to face. So get your head out of your butt and get a plan in place. Talk to your other counties. You guys should be doing this the whole time. Our county is so siloed where you guys don't do anything outside except the community focus. You need to start learning from the counties that are successful. We clearly are not as successful as we want to be. So please, start looking to the success of others on how to serve your constituents or be out of a job.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
All right.
Supervisor, if I may?
Yes.
I don't normally respond to public comment, but I do think it's important to note that these individuals are grossly misinformed. And of course, they don't have the benefit of knowing what the board and what staff have been doing over the past several weeks. And so making comments that are inaccurate, uninformed, serves the public very poorly. And so I think it bears repeating, or at least stating on the record, that staff at the direction of the board has been working very closely together. We've been conferring with our regional partners. And the CAO and I have spent many, an hour late at night, working on these matters to make sure that the county was ready and following very closely all of the developments at the federal and state level. So everything was ready. It was a matter of understanding whether or not there was going to be a resolution at the state or federal level before Saturday. But everything was in place, everything was ready. And so I just think it's important for everyone to understand that this board and county staff were prepared and that this matter is a very serious matter and it was treated as such. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the board.
Yeah, I can make a few comments. It's, it's unfortunate. You know, we, we started today's meeting talking about misinformation, it's put out, knowingly putting out misinformation to confuse the public and lead them in a, a different direction. I talked about earlier, where did this start from? Our federal and state levels. Who has to clean up the mess? Somehow we magically, we magically have to do this. We're not the ones that can print money. But we're the ones that have to figure this out in reality terms. You hear about, don't fix the roads, don't fix this, don't do that. And the minute we make a decision over here, how dare you not fix the roads? How dare you not do this? It's all very important. Of course, we need to figure out a way to make sure residents or community are getting food. But what we don't need is the misinformation. Because our attorney is correct. This conversation that happened with us yesterday, this has been ongoing. What happens if things do shut down in November? How are we going to address it? What are the other counties doing? How can we work with them? All those things were being done. Our agency here gave plans. How do we get as much funding as we can from different sources? All of it was being done. So it's very frustrating to sit up here and hear somebody instantly make it political about us. It's not about us. It's about this whole community. How are we going to work together instead of this ongoing nonsense? That's what it is, guys. We just heard it. Here we are finding a way to get some funding from reserves or different ways to make sure our residents aren't hungry, they get services they need. Let's stick to that. We heard offers of volunteering. That's what we need. Not pointing fingers again. Let's figure this out. And more importantly, let's hold the people that are actually causing this problem accountable. It's not us. All we're trying to do is fix the tire with the nail in it right here. We all know how this is happening. So please, this conversation, this other conversation, they don't help us. They really don't. If anything, it makes us start to wonder, are we even doing the right thing? Let's stick together and do this right so we don't keep straying off in these directions that we shouldn't be in. Thank you.
Supervisor Curro, Supervisor Satello?
You know, boy, leave it to, um, certain individuals to take a positive and try to make it a negative political statement. It's really quite amazing. Um, what the county is doing here today is really stepping up in a big way. And, uh, we're all behind it, we're all united. Um, and, um, this is a victory for the community. This is, we're going to, we're going to be there for our residents. I think it's very clear we're going to be there for our residents and that commitment is, is, you know, steadfast from our board. And, um, I just want to, you know, thank the food bank for everything they do. Um, you know, I don't want to be overly negative here and I'm not going to get too baited by the person who tries to bait and bait and bait and whoever else was on there in the coordinated fashion they were on, um, to try to be negative. Um, but I don't want to take anything away from especially Mary Vasquez Edge, who I did co-found the distribution within San Juan. It started at the soccer field in 2020. Um, Bill Lee, the developer was mentioned and he came in, he was, I think, the third or fourth distributor that we had. Um, so, um, it's just typical unfortunate that we have this, um, toxic environment by a small group, by one individual in particular who shows up and constantly misinforms the community. Um, and Greg, I just, you know, hopefully you don't show up in a cartoon, that's all I got to say. Um, but, um.
Actually, sir, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Um, because I feel left out at this point.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, this is a big deal. You know, we are, we're going out on a limb here and, and, and we're going to be there with you at the food bank. We're going to make sure that no child is left without food. That's my commitment. Uh, I know that's this board's commitment, so anything further?
Do we need to do any type of action?
We have to, uh, clear an emergency and give direction on, um, if CAO wants to take the lead here, but I believe we talked about allocating a hundred thousand dollars as emergency funding, as a temporary stopgap, setting a meeting for Thursday. Um, and I'm okay with the, and I saw some head shaking, uh, with the food bank's recommendation on how to at least handle this, at least in the short term while we're figuring these things out.
Mr. Chair, there actually would be three actions.
Yeah.
Before this board. Number one is to adopt the resolution ratifying the existence of a local emergency, authorize the chair to sign the resolution. And number three, and that is to allocate a hundred thousand dollars to the food bank.
Through HHSA.
Through HHSA.
And with the, with the following caveat, if the emergency declaration is accepted by the states, then we look for reimbursement because we actually using resource from HSA. I just want to make sure that it's stated on the record, uh, so we can make an, an effort. If it's not accepted, then we will be, uh, just committing to that.
Yeah. Any recommendations on the table? Is there a motion?
Uh, I move per staff's recommendations with the understanding that this would come back on Thursday with additional options for, um, more funding, um, and how that could look. Uh, so I make that motion.
We have a first, we have a second.
Second.
All's in favor, roll call.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velasquez?
Yes.
Or zero vote, motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. That would complete our regular, uh, no, we have one emergency item, I apologize. So that we, take us to 2.3, which was added earlier in the meeting, CAO?
Yes. Uh, our request today is to extend a contract for private security with behavioral health. It was brought to my attention last week that somehow the department issued a notice of cancellation of services. Uh, I think there was, um, scheduled to have a selection committee for the new, uh, private services. But we trying to formalize the process and the selection to ensure that everybody gets the opportunity to be ranked the proper way. And so therefore, in order to continue providing those private services, security services at behavioral health, it is important to extend the contract. I did talk to the current contractor, uh, week before the ending of this contract and we agreed that I will bring the contract for you ratification, approval ratification of the contract for two additional months so that the office is protected with private security. So the security has never stopped. They have been there on a continuous basis, um, uh, racial, white, uh, the interim behavioral health director is following out with them as well. But I did make that call based on an emergency situation because I was not aware that the contract was, um, canceled about a man ago. But the process, the services would never discontinue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Did you have anything further? If not, that's fine. But we're just basically ratifying the contract today.
Yeah, no, um, I think everything that, um, CAO, um, Colio had dismissed is what we need. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have a recommended motion, um, to meet your needs?
Yes, to approve the extension of the contract. It has been reviewed by county council and is for two months until December 31st, just to ensure that we have protection, uh, services with the, uh, with the behavioral health while we're completing the request for proposals process and selecting the new company.
Okay. And before we come back, public comment and then we'll come back to the board.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press turn under the raised hand icon. And in chambers, Elia?
I come before the board and I give you information. I go sit down and I get called a liar. I keep coming back, giving you information and Supervisor Cosmiki and Supervisor Velasquez, Supervisor Velasquez, I am not an elected official. I am a public person without any funds being given to me by any county checks because I don't work for the county. I don't work for developers. I came before you last Tuesday on the, on a phone call via Zoom to tell you to please add on the agenda as an emergency item because the security contract was going to end on Friday, October the 31st. I asked, please, uh, put it on the agenda, discuss it, to try to extend it for the next 30 or 90 days until you decide on what you're going to do with security because it was going to end that day. This contract extension that was actually signed on Saturday, it was sent numerous times and it was canceled numerous times. I don't see, I don't stand up here and I don't lie to you because I get information that's truthful and factual and I do, I'll do my homework. There was, there was a contract before you to approve. And it should have been done last Tuesday before it terminated on Friday, signed on Saturday, the decision was finally made on Saturday. So for your CAO or CEO, I'm sorry, whatever the title is today, to say that she barely found out about it is a lack of information and communication between her staff and department heads. The CEO was placed in a situation that it should have been brought forward because it's my understanding that the cancellation of the contract was done by a staff member and we all knew, we've been waiting for the RFPs to come through for social, for, for security. It's not been agendized. It must be approved by the county board of supervisors. It was not approved and somebody took it upon themselves to send an email, to send a letter and saying, your contract is canceled, we've hired ABC Company. You need to find out and you need to talk to those employees because that is not cool to do.
I have no further public comment.
Thank you very much. Bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Um, being a member of the behavioral health, um, uh, board, I, I want to, I want the public to understand there are a couple of things going on. One, the behavioral health director has resigned. Um, that, that's no excuse. Um, we have a new CAO. There is a transitional period happening right now. There are things in this county that were not being done properly, that the CAO is now ensuring are being done properly. There were things that happened, like cancellations of a contract that should not have happened and I completely agree, they shouldn't have happened. Um, there's no reason that, um, the security should be at risk for internal issues that we're trying to address now. The CAO is working very closely with the department heads. Rachel, I want to thank you, um, it for stepping up because this, this is a trying time right now at behavioral health and I appreciate everything that you're doing. Um, don't let this, you know, taint the beginning of, of where things could be going. Uh, the behavioral health board did meet, the behavioral board made recommendations. It was not fully, um, notified to the CAO. The CAO did get informed late, late last week of all of the things that were happening and unfortunately, the, moving this forward as an emergency item is crucial. Um, I want the public to understand that the procedures that are being addressed internally now are procedures that have been woefully misused when it comes to RFP processes. And I think this board and especially, um, Chair Cosmiki, I think you've been an advocate of the bidding process, ensuring the procurement policies are being followed. We have got someone on board that is making sure that happens, but there is a definite learning curve that is happening with our departments. And I'm sorry for all this confusion that's happening, but also getting departments to understand what their role is, what committees and commissions roles are versus what the board's authority is, is become a major topic in this county. And I, I'm grateful that this is hap, that this is being resolved, but I want the public to understand it is not just this contract. There are compounded issues that are happening that we are identifying not only as a board but as administration is moving forward. And without this transitional change that's going to change the foundation of this county, we are not going to solve problems of the past. I have been the harper on contracts, bad contract wording, bad bidding processes, unencumbering funds. I mean, I can go on and on. This is going to get resolved and isn't going to happen ongoing, but we have a transitional period right now. And I'm sorry that we got to this point, but I beg this board to please approve this contract extension. The bids are going to be re-reviewed by the committee. All of the bids will be re-reviewed by the committee and we will be bringing a recommendation forward for the board's approval, which then will move forward with any notifications of any vendor cancellations.
By me?
Yep.
Um, just to give you an idea, I have an email actually last Wednesday with, uh, the current company. Uh, we had discussions and we did follow up, uh, with them. And I want to assure you that no services were ever halted. There were, the, the private services continued, they were never stopped. So it's my job, when I find out about issues like this, to react and to act. And so just be aware that, um, it's in, I'm trying to do as much as I can with the tools and the staff that I have. And, and I thank Ms. Rachel because we have been on the phone since then. Um, but the prop, the employees were never a risk. We have security services. Thank you.
Anything further? Supervisor Satello? entertain a motion to approve this staff recommendation?
I move to approve, uh, the extension per staff recommendation. Second.
We have a second, all's in favor, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velasquez?
Yes.
Four, zero vote, motion passes.
Great, thank you. That would take us to closed session. Is there any public comment on closed session?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press turn under the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Turn to closed session. Is that the preference? Is that the preference? Thank you.
Take two. You did really well.
I practiced all day, all night. All right, everybody. Thank you. Welcome back. We're back from closed session. In closed session, the board discussed and heard items 3.1 through 3.6. Direction was given on those items, but there's no reportable action. And that would take us to our future agenda items 4.1. We do not have any new future agenda items. Are there any public comment on future agenda items?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press turn on the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Any comments from the board? Hearing none. We are adjourned. Thank you.